Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Here.
Councilmember Burnt.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Here.
Mayor DeVere.
Here. Item number two is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Anything that we need to change on our work session agenda, so I move we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion in second to adopt the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Item three is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented. For the mayor to sign, the clerk to attest.
I have a motion in second to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
All ayes. Item four A under action items is the approval of the amount to publish for the fiscal year 2019 amended budget.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I move we approve the fiscal year 2019 amended budget in the amount of $120,267,651.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
All ayes. Item four B is approval of the fiscal year 2020 tentative budget to publish. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
Before Mr. Cavanagh makes his motion, I'd like to make it, just say something in the public record that I wasn't here during the second workshop. But I took some time and reviewed the minutes online on YouTube and have reached out and asked questions that I need to ask. And so I feel like I am able to make a vote on this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Burnt.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Move we approve the fiscal year 2020 tentative budget in the amount of $120,525,396.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve item four B that's in front of you for publishing for the public hearing. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I know you touched on it, and I know probably everybody here in the room knows it, but I just think it's important just to reiterate, this is the dollar amount that we are publishing. Should the council make any other action, you can reduce this amount, but we cannot increase this amount.
That's correct. Thank you. There's no discussion. Mr. Palmer, I'm sorry.
Just to explain my vote, I think that we haven't done our jobs well enough yet to be ready to submit it to the public, so that's why I'm voting no on this, because it's not polished.
Okay. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
No.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
The ayes happened. Thank you. Item five A is under department reports. We have a report on our fire department and the public art that, you know.
Madam Mayor, I'm filling in for Hillary Blackstone and the Meridian Arts Commission who cannot be here to share the recommendation for Fire Station Number Six Public Art Installation. MAC and the project scoring panel recommend that Daniel Borup's Kneeling Bronze Firefighter be selected as the public artwork to be installed at Fire Station Number Six. They recommend the proposal is included in your meeting packet. The photos included in your packet will be used by the artist to ensure that he can capture details ranging from how the fire hose is held to details in the straps, clips, and gear. We will also ask for the firefighter's pose to be angled forward to better reflect the attack motion that firefighters assume when they engage with a fire. Deputy Chief Butterfield served on the scoring panel and was at the MAC meeting where the panel recommendation was accepted. Stacy Redman is also present, I believe. Maybe not, to help answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Anything further?
Nope. Answer questions, and we're happy to stand for questions.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
So there was practically the same item or the same proposal proposed in the previous version before Hillary had come back and requested another $5,000 to attempt to attract new proposers to see if it could be gender neutral. And so it was proposed, it was just in a standing form instead of kneeling. The new version mentions that if it's standing, it's going to be six and a half or feet tall. If it's kneeling, it's four foot, ten inches, I think. It didn't mention in the first version a kneeling option, but that from my studying of the two proposals, it seemed like that wasn't a big deal. It was just kind of a pick one. But the cost did go up by 5,000. And so I'm just, I don't know who the question would go to, but what's changed in two months to make it so that the labor is 5,000 more than it was before?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Palmer, I'll do my best to answer your question as I have been involved in this process. We did send out, or the commission did send out the initial request with a budget of $30,000. And with what we had received back from that request, we didn't really, as they were reviewed, we wanted something better. We were looking for something with more symbolic of the fire department, with more symbology, right? There's a lot of symbology with the fire department. And so it was, and these were decisions above me, but decisions were made that if they increased, from my understanding, the decisions were if we increased the budget a little bit, maybe we'll get more people, more artists, to submit some renderings for review. And so those decisions were made. There was an increase. And actually, we didn't get very many more, even with an increased amount of money. What we received back was that one particular one he resubmitted with a higher price tag. And then there were a few other ones that submitted that still were not really to the level that we had hoped to get a greater amount of projects to review. But after we did get the projects that were reviewed, and as somebody that sat on that and did review those, there were some questions to the one individual that can he change that? Can he maybe make it a little more likened to a firefighter entering a burning house in a crouching position? And that was, he was amenable to those requests. And so that's kind of how we ended up, where we ended up with that particular situation. And ultimately, I think with what he has and his ability to work with us and what we've asked, I think we're very excited for what he has offered to provide to us. That was very important, and this was part of my comments to the MAC council was, you know, we really, the fire department, diversity and inclusivity is very important into the fire department. And we wanted to have something that really demonstrated that. And I think that this particular one in the crouching position coming in with a SCBA mask on the face, it really leaves it up to whoever the person is looking at art. And I think that's one of the great things about art is that it is up to the person observing the art as to how they see it. So with this particular model, we don't know gender. We don't know race. We don't know ethnicity. It is very neutral, and I think that that is something from the perspective of the fire department that we want going ahead for a piece of art that's going to be there for the next 50 or 60 years. So with that being said, I was pretty pleased with it. I expressed my thoughts to the board, and I hope that answers your question.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Charlie. Yes, Mr. Palmer.
So are you aware of any reasoning as to why this version might take another $5,000 worth of labor?
That I do not know, and I don't, I have an answer for that, as to why he, his same rendering came back at a higher price.
Thanks.
Other questions?
You answered the questions.
Okay.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
It says action item. I assume that they're looking for a motion to approve it.
Yes.
Then I move that we approve the one that's been chosen, but with an amount not to exceed $30,000 as was proposed two months ago.
Second for discussion purposes.
Okay. I have a motion in a second.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Cavanagh.
Again, perhaps it may even be beneficial to continue this a week, because I don't want to put Chris or Charlie, you know, on notice. But having some better understanding as to what necessitated the $5,000 increase, to me, makes me feel better to support a motion to approve this. Without having that information, it's very hard to be able to be supportive. So I approve the motion mostly to get the conversation going. I'd almost support maybe a substitute motion to continue this. Council President Portman's not here, so I feel like we have more leeway to substitute motions. But I would feel much better if we had an opportunity to hear from Hillary to get some better understanding. And if that question hadn't been asked by the committee, to give them the opportunity so that we can feel confident that if we're approving it at the requested amount, that there's a justification for it.
I sent a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Cavanagh.
I'd be happy to make a substitute motion that we continue item five A to when? September? I mean, holy cow. To August 13th.
I have a motion in a second to continue this to the 13th of August. Any discuss?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Burnt.
I actually was driving down Eustick Road, and I passed, I believe, Fire Station Four in Boise, and they had a piece of artwork out in front. And I really liked how it looked. I thought it was great. I've always been a little bit skeptical of not necessarily having it be a firefighter, but maybe it being in front of a brand-new, big fire station that's already going to be gorgeous. But after looking at that fire station on Eustick, Fire Station Four in the city of Boise, I changed my mind. It was good-looking. I think it's appropriate. And so I agree. I think we should listen, maybe $5,000 of public funds is quite a bit. And so I think that it would be prudent to listen and have that question answered. But I'm excited. I'm excited about this project. I think it's going to look really nice.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Mylum.
I agree that it would be nice to have some answers and know that it's not just $5,000 more because they can, because we put the money out there and just raised their proposal. But I guess I would like to make sure from Charlie that this, a couple of weeks out, isn't going to, on this art, is detrimental to the health of the city or the fire department project.
Madam Mayor, Ms. Mylum, yeah, it won't be, it doesn't affect any of
Timeline will be okay.
timelines or anything. And really, yeah, to the extent of the increase of funds, I think Hillary would definitely be of a better person to answer your questions on that, for sure.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you, Charlie. I have a motion in a second to continue this item to the 13th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Item five B is under our police department. Today, we get to hear from our crime prevention team, and I'll turn this over to Lieutenant Coliani to introduce them.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members. We appreciate the time this afternoon to talk all things crime prevention. It's been almost a year. We like to get out in front of you once a year just to kind of give you an update on where we're at, crime prevention. You were gracious enough to grant us with a second position in crime prevention, to take on additional responsibilities, an apartment community program, and more business outreach. And I think we're headed in that right direction. But tonight is just kind of a high-level overview to give you what we've done in the last few years, or the last year, and where we're at this year and what the future holds for us. It doesn't do me a lot to get up and talk to you in front of you. I'd like you to hear it from the people that are on the ground during the work, doing the work, and so you can have some FaceTime with them and ask them questions. It's good for them. Plus, they can get up and share what they've done in the community. We focus a lot on prevention. Throughout the year, we talk about prevention and enforcement and education. Tonight, we want to highlight the prevention and education piece. And so I'm going to turn it over to Sarah and Stephanie and let them talk all things crime prevention, and they'll have questions for you, I'm sure, at the end, or you can have questions for them. Thank you.
I've got a big list.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
And Sarah.
Hi. So thank you for having us. My name is Sarah Herrick, and I'm part of the Crime Prevention Unit. Last year, the police department requested a second position, and it was granted. And after applying and interviewing, I was selected in October of last year. Prior to that, I worked for the city in the records department as a data clerk for almost three years. And my name is Stephanie Galbraith. I've been with the Crime Prevention Unit now going on five years. Thank you for having us, and super excited to have Sarah along with the work that we do for the city. It's nice to have a partner and continue to develop our programming with the additional resources, so thank you for that. Today's presentation, we're going to be focusing on the past year, what's going on now, what we're working on, and then also what's in store for the future of the Crime Prevention Unit. The mission statement for crime prevention is to help develop, administer different programs for the community to attend that can help reduce crime and prevent crime for our community members. This can range from a lot of different specific activities, everything from neighborhood watch groups, which we'll be discussing. We have community presentations. We do our Public Safety Academy and our tours of the department. We have National Night Out coming up, which is Tuesday, August 6th. We hope that you guys are able to attend. And there's plenty more. Last year, we did over 94 events, reaching 21,600 community members. And a big portion of that is our neighborhood watch groups. So in the past year, we added five neighborhood watch groups, bringing our total to 110. These different groups are liaisons throughout the community that connect with Sarah and I on a lot of different levels, whether it's our Nextdoor app that we have, or email, and in-person at homeowners association meetings. We work with them to give them crime statistics and then provide them with resources to help them be able to be self-advocates and help prevent crime for our community. So in partnership with IT and Crime Analysis Unit, we were able to sit down, brainstorm, and develop this new enhanced neighborhood watch tool that is known as a story map, and it's going to be a great service to the community. If a citizen goes to meridiancity.org/neighborhoodwatch, it will pull up a story map that I'm going to pull up now. So if they go to that page, it pulls this up, and this can be found on the city's website under Crime Prevention on the main page with the interactive maps. And they can pull it up through the link that I had mentioned. So on the side there is the geographical map of the city of Meridian. And all the blue area, and you can see that on the legend, is the neighborhood watch groups. So if a citizen is curious if they have a neighborhood watch in their area or if they want to start one, they can simply go to this search tool here and type in their address. And for the purposes of an example, I put in the police department. And once they put that address in, it zooms in, and it shows them if it currently has a neighborhood watch group or if it does not. And if they didn't want to put in their address, but they just wanted to take a look at the areas of Meridian, you can see, like, for example, Brookside Square and Woodbridge does have neighborhood watch groups. And then on the other side, it shows you the goal of neighborhood watch. It gives you some different ways to contact us, like our email address. And then also, if the citizen wants to click our patch, it will pull up the city's crime prevention page where they are able to see additional resources and communication options to contact Sarah and I. A few things that they can do is they can see the big events such as Public Safety Academy, National Night Out. And also, they can click the community outreach, and they're able to request us for different events out in the community. If they want us to have a booth or teach a specific topic or work with a youth group, we're able to provide that resource, and it just sends it to us via email. And also, on there is the construction theft prevention material that we have recently developed that Sarah will be discussing next. All right. So in the fall of last year, the Building Contract Association reached out to our unit due to the recent rise in construction site thefts. So after attending multiple meetings with them and in partnership with our community development team, Stephanie and I created this two-part flyer. This flyer, we rolled out at the beginning of the year, and it's a pretty text-heavy document, so I'm going to go over a couple of them with you. This flyer is being part of our building permit process. The idea is to get this to our contractors as soon as possible so they have those prevention tools right away. So the first one we have is deter, and we have bullet points such as provide lighting after hours. This is a great tool. It's quick, and it's easy for our contractors, and it gets that light up right away. Next, we have defend, and we have marking wood with bright paint. It's an awesome tool. When our officers are on routine patrol and they see this bright paint somewhere that doesn't look familiar on these OSB boards or on tools, they know to contact that homeowner or that construction worker. Next, we have detect, and we have empowering the neighbors, or empowering the neighbors. I like this one. It gets our contractors to know everybody around them, and just because they might not live in that neighborhood, they're getting to know the people around them, bringing that sense of community together.
You know, Sarah, on that one, we built our home, and we also did the cleanup at night. And we were in there later than usual with our flashlights, cleaning up the stuff. And the police officer showed up with this big spotlight on us as we were climbing out our window, you know. So the neighbors had called it in. And it was, I went over and thanked them for doing that, because it was really reassuring to know that we had people keeping an eye on that. So I think that one is a really big deal, too.
Thank you.
So I appreciated that you pointed that out.
Thank you. So the next is our second part of our flyer, and it's more of a quick bullet flyer, and it's intended to be posted at the job sites. The idea of this is so our employees, when they're leaving the site, have these quick reminders to make them one less victim out there. This flyer is being handed out by our patrol officers and our code enforcement officers where they are on routine patrol, and both flyers were also produced in Spanish as well. Since we rolled out this program at the beginning of the year, we have found an early analysis that there has been a reduction in reported thefts at construction sites. So with the new position comes new trainings. And the first training I attended was crime prevention through environmental design. The concept of this training is used to discourage crime and promote building security through design. An example of what we look for when we're at these buildings or residential areas are the three L's, as we like to say, and it's lighting, locks, and landscaping. The next training I attended was crime-free multi-housing. This is a three-part approach to crime prevention, and it's designed specifically for our rental community. All right. So with the training I went to and the knowledge that I gained, Stephanie and I created this new program for the city. We're calling the program Apartment Community Crime Prevention Program. And again, it's a three-phase program, and I'll go over the three phases with you all. The first phase is our training phase, and it's for our property managers. And the intention of this phase is to get out to our rental properties and get to know our property managers better and to teach them some successful resources they have in our program. Some of the training material we'll be discussing is our current crime trends and what resources they have throughout the city. We will also go over some best practices for them. An example of that is their screening process for their application renters. The next phase is our inspection phase, and as I mentioned before, we'll go out and we'll do crime prevention through environmental design training. And we will get out there, and we will suggest how they can improve life and provide a safer environment for their renters. The third is our safety social, or the fun phase, as I like to call it. And it's when we get to get out to our community and make those further connections with our renters and our property managers. We will use this time to have them celebrate that the property managers have completed their three-phase program with us, and we will give them their certificate that they get to post at their apartment properties. We will use this time to align it with our National Night Out time, and the idea of this is to help them build that same sense of pride with their home. So in addition to the Apartment Community Crime Prevention Program, we will be focusing our efforts on building relationships with a lot of different sectors of Meridian. A couple of examples will be, we're going to be offering some employee safety training for local businesses. This has been an ongoing request, and we want to fulfill those from our community. We're also going to be providing crime prevention through environmental design evaluations for local banks. This gives them something tangible that they can implement within their business and have ownership in helping prevent crime. And also, we want to attend and continue to promote an organization called Organized Retail Crime Association of Idaho, also known as ORCADE. This is a group that is free and open for local businesses to come and attend. They talk about current crime trends within their retail establishments. They talk about ways to help prevent those and brainstorm how they can continue to lower their crime within their retail establishments. We want to make sure that this resource is known throughout the city of Meridian and continue to attend those meetings so that we can be a resource for them as well, for the city of Meridian. So we know we've covered a lot of information, and again, we thank you for having us, and we stand for questions.
Thank you, Stephanie and Sarah. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, thank you, ladies. Wonderful presentation. I think we are all excited about the possibility of preventing crime rather than having to deal with it once it happens. But my question's on neighborhood watch, I guess because I've been in the same community over 20 years and have seen a pretty robust. And now, as far as I can tell, and I will be on your map to look and see if we still have one, I haven't heard anything about it for several years. What are you seeing overall? Is it kind of a cyclical thing, or are you seeing it growing over the last few years?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Roberts. So it definitely has shifted. Before, it was a lot about the block captains and the sort of the pyramid effect of who's going to be working the neighborhood. And now, it's a lot social media-based with having private Facebook groups, and also the Nextdoor application is free. So our groups will be able to discuss issues or concerns on there, and then we can also communicate through there. So it's a different platform and a different style than it used to be, but it still does exist. Some neighborhoods prefer to have the face-to-face conversations, so we will attend those homeowners association meetings. Or we have a couple of National Night Out parties that specifically ask us to come and talk about neighborhood watch. And so we'll come out and do that with them. But each neighborhood is definitely different based on those who live in that area. So, great question.
Thank you.
Stephanie, you said you had 110 neighborhood watch units. What was, what has been the growth? What was it the year before?
Madam Mayor, we actually have added five since the last year. This is the record number that we've ever had, and our goal is to not only sustain that, but we want to continue to grow it as well. We are going to definitely be focusing on the apartment neighborhood watch groups, the crime prevention program that we're implementing, to continue to raise that number.
Now, they used to do an annual meeting, bringing the Valley Neighborhood Watch groups together. Are they still doing that?
No, Madam Mayor, no. Currently, we aren't doing that. We definitely, almost every single one of our National Night Out groups, that's kind of the event that they do to help build their neighborhood watch groups. But that's a great idea, and we can definitely look at producing something like that.
Okay. Ms. Mylum.
Thank you for the awesome presentation, and I loved the pictures. I was previewing them at home, but great photos. But my question is about your neighborhood watch app or site, your tool, which I think is amazing, but does it concern you at all that it could also be a tool for criminals? So I'm looking at it, and there's like this big white hole of note. I'm like, that's where, if I was a criminal, that's where to target. So have you thought about that at all, or how to? I don't know if there's an answer to how to prevent people from using that, or hopefully, they don't go to our website.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Genesis Mylum. It is something to be aware of, but it's, I think, for us, more important that we're transparent in what areas do you have neighborhood watch groups? And the goal for us is to interact with those areas that are empty and start building those areas up. But it's important that we continue to communicate to our Meridian citizens and allow them to see that information.
And hopefully, they will look at that map, too, and say, oh, we got to get started over here. We definitely want our neighborhood protected. So I really hope that it helps in that manner as well. But it looks like a great tool.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Couple of questions, sticking with the neighborhood watch theme. One, I learned tonight that my neighborhood has a neighborhood watch. I wasn't aware of that, so maybe we've got some work to do in our neighborhood. Does it cost anything for a neighborhood to set up a neighborhood watch, and if so, what does it cost?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Luke Cavanagh. It does not cost anything to start a neighborhood watch group. It's completely free. The requirement is that they are in communication with us and that we meet with them at least once a year. And if they want signs, for example, that is a cost to the own neighborhood watch group or the homeowners association that's not covered by the city. In the past, we have worked on getting grants for neighborhood watch signs that we're looking into. into currently to be able to build those for the apartment program. But really, there's no cost to anyone in the community to put this on. It's just time. They have to be willing to put in the effort and work with us and communicate with us as we develop their program.
Madam Mayor, Paul Poggin. Do we see Neighborhood Watches setting up in brand-new neighborhoods or are they neighborhoods that have been around for a while, maybe have had a crime spree or a crime occur and so that's the response? Where are these five new ones coming from or where are you seeing most of your Neighborhood Watches germinating from?
So, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Kavner. Actually, all five of ours are new developments. For example, Sky Mesa is one of them. We work with those who, they're newer, I should say. And a lot of them are moving from the builder-owned to having the HOA board. And so, they want to get this established early on and so they can continue to sustain that. We have had different areas reach out to us who may have seen a spike in a specific crime, like a concern about graffiti. And so, they want to revamp an existing Neighborhood Watch, which is also great. We appreciate that.
Madam Mayor, and Stephanie, I think you kind of arrived at the destination that I've kind of been following as you've been giving this presentation, is that maybe there is, and maybe you're doing this, an opportunity to really work with builders and establish Neighborhood Watches, even when they're builder-led. The great work that you guys are doing with the BCA has clearly demonstrated the value to our citizens and our stakeholders. So, I think there's a, again, applaud the work that you're already doing. And you may have already been headed down this pathway, but I love the idea that as the very first resident that moves into a brand-new neighborhood, there's already a Neighborhood Watch established. We've set that value, that benchmark from the beginning, rather than waiting for the residents to take over the homeowners association, then say, okay, now we can do it.
Sure.
Madam Mayor, Stephanie, Sarah, thank you for your presentation. No questions, just congratulations. It's awesome. You guys are doing a good job. So, keep up the good work. I'd like to see what's going to happen with the apartments. That's a little bit different than HOAs.
Well, and you actually have taken that. We did a program a number of years ago, but you've taken it like the third and fourth level. And that's really exciting to see. Also, at that time when we were doing that, we did frontline workers' training as well, where we brought in the utility companies and our own water and sewer and the trash collectors and talked about what signs to look for in neighborhood streets as you're driving down it and who to call because we didn't want them to address it. But also, they needed to know what to do with that information. And so, it'd be great to see that. Also, Stephanie and Sarah cared for and really build on top of that as well. This is really exciting. And I'll tell you that what I've heard from the BCA and working with this and really taking their comments serious in trying to be solution-oriented, it really is the Meridian way. So, great compliments and comments in response to how you've really took this and developed something in collaboration with them. And that's all good. So, thank you for what you guys are doing with this program. And as Councilmember Lowell Roberts pointed out, prevention and being proactive upfront does save us costs on the back end because it's always more costly to respond and react than to be proactive. So, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Yeah, Item 5C is a discussion that will be led by Councilmember Kedner.
Go down, if that's okay?
Sure.
East to Crest, pass out. You've got to have memos, right? You've got to have memories. So, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, it's fun being down here before you all this evening. A couple of years ago, City Council kind of evolved. Oh, Madam, do you want me to introduce myself?
No, I think you're known. I kind of introduced you by saying you would be leading the discussion.
When we started this process of kind of having councilmembers be able to work on or noodle on or address community issues, it's something I think that we should all be really proud of. I love this process for you councilmembers who will be leaving us at the end of the year. I would encourage you to go through this process at least once. I think it's really, really important for our community and for us as councilmembers to be down here sometimes and remind ourselves what our citizens experience when they're down here looking up at us. And it gives us a great opportunity to address an issue, which is what I have before you tonight, talking parking in our driveways. As you all may recall, we've touched on this a number of times over the past couple of years and appreciate having the opportunity to come before you about this particular idea, which relates to what you can and cannot park on your driveway on the property that you own. For instance, you can park, you can park a car that appears to be movable but actually isn't as long as it has a license plate, but you can't park a half-a-million-dollar RV on your driveway. You can park, again, a vehicle that appears to be running but isn't functional, as long as it has its license plate on your driveway, but you can't park a Razor. You can park those vehicles in the streets for up to three days, but you cannot park them in your driveway. So, to me, and to really quite frankly, the reason I'm here is not because I have any dog in this fight. I don't have an RV. I don't have a boat. I don't have a Razor. The only thing that would qualify as a recreational vehicle is a Mickey Mouse power wheel that is parked predominantly in our garage that belongs to my three-year-old. But over the past couple of years, I've heard from some of our constituents who have experienced this issue, again, unaware that they couldn't park something that they owned on the property that they also own. This has been touched on a little bit by code enforcement. And I know the City Council even noodled on this a little over a decade ago. And personally, I've always had this belief that if a constituent comes to me with a concern about a law or an ordinance and I can't explain it, then I owe it to our citizens to at least bring it to the body so we can at least have a discussion about, does this make sense or does it not? At the end of the day, if we are done with this discussion tonight, that's okay with me. If we think, oh, boy, this doesn't make sense and maybe deserves to be addressed, that's okay with me, too. And I'm happy to do the legwork because it's important to a few of our citizens and I'm happy to do the homework on it. So, what you have before you is a much more eloquent synopsis of what I shared with you tonight, as well as a copy of the court ordinance. What I'm looking for tonight is some direction about, is this an issue that we as a body want to address? Do we think that there are modifications that are warranted? Or are we great with the status quo? And on to the next thing. I am trying to delay things a little bit so that Councilmember Borton can get here for his presentation. So, I'll be happy to take any questions as well. But that would be the action I'd be looking for from the body tonight.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lowell Roberts.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Kavner, thank you so much for this. It seems very timely. I've had several people approach me lately and I think it's because it's boating and RV season. And I was out for a walk rather late one evening, not quite dark. And a neighbor that knows I'm on the council said, could you clarify me a question or answer a question? He was cleaning his boat and he would like to finish the next day, but he felt, he's right on a curve and he felt like it would be much safer if he pulled it into his driveway, which he had plenty of space. And he said, do I understand correctly that I cannot pull it into my driveway and be legal but safer? But I can leave it on the street and go ahead and finish it in the morning? And I said, that is unfortunately absolutely correct. You can leave it where it's not as safe on the corner, be legal, or pull it in your driveway and be safer and illegal.
Sure.
And I will keep on my walk and leave you to your decision.
Madam Mayor, if I can. One, Mr. Neri can always chime in because I, not the city attorney and don't want to speak out of turn. But I also think it's important to know that these issues, those instances that occur, are largely complaint-driven, right? So, somebody else in the neighborhood sees that some thing's parked in the driveway and they call. Then they call code enforcement. Code enforcement comes out and they cite. Sometimes they call, you know, a phone call is made to code enforcement for one neighbor. And while they're there, they see there's another type of violation from another neighbor and then they get cited. I can speak to my years working in the mayor's office as the community liaison. You would often have instances of neighbors who are fighting with each other, using code enforcement as weapons to have their neighborhood's lives in their kind of way made miserable. So, it's not that we have code enforcement that's driving around looking for this. It's largely complaint-driven. But I believe the feedback you provided, your neighbor was correct.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Can I call you Luke?
You sure can.
I think this is a great topic to discuss. So, I'm definitely for bringing it back. It does seem somewhat ridiculous that you can park something in the street where it could be in the way of traffic, causing a hazard, when it could safely be parked in a driveway. So, also, it will free code enforcement a little bit because now it's going to be in the hands of the HOAs. So, if they have, if there's a rule in their HOA in the CCNR that they can't park in there for more than three days or whatever, they're still going to have that issue. But instead of taxpayer dollars and our police department paying for it, it's going to be in the neighborhood's hands. So, I think it's a great, great thing to talk about. Thank you for bringing it to us.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Can I call you Genesis?
Not today.
Councilmember Mylum. I appreciate those comments. And I will say, while I don't have a dog in this fight, I have been the person who has called code enforcement in my neighborhood. I have a corner that is off of a long stretch of roadway where my neighbor parks a very large, a very nice RV, which does create a concern, especially in the morning or in the afternoon, that you can't see if there's anybody that's coming. I agree philosophically that these types of issues, because there's, where they're placed in the driveway doesn't pose to, I've been able to identify a public safety concern, that it is better suited for our homeowners associations if that, as a neighborhood, what they want to do to address that, that they have the ability to do that, exactly freeing up our code enforcement officers' time.
So, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, I can help give some context. I think Councilmember Kavner's covered it really well. We've had this discussion off and on for a number of years. And the original conversation with code enforcement many years ago was similar in the sense that our code says you can park it in your side yard when it's screened. There are hundreds, if not thousands, that are parked that are not screened. And so, the problem is, is that the screening in the side yard designation works in certain neighborhoods and in certain areas where they have enough room. Many of the current building footprints don't leave enough side yard to park an RV in anyway. So, there is that conflict. We had a meeting with code enforcement a number of months ago and my request to them, and unfortunately, they couldn't be here tonight. So, I think if you want to have further discussion with the code enforcement folks with Mr. Everett with would be helpful as well. But my request to them was, well, what would work for you? I mean, not try to mediate the entire world's issues on what fits in one neighborhood versus another, but what would work from an enforcement standpoint for you folks to deal with? And I think Councilmember Kavner's hit it on the head. I mean, the struggle they have is they go out to neighborhoods and the logical place to put that RV or boat is in their driveway. It's less dangerous. It's less of a hazard, yet it doesn't fit very well there and it won't fit in the side yard as our code requires. And so, parking on the street is allowed. And again, it creates a hazard. And then, the secondary effect is you have a neighbor saying, what about that guy and that guy and that guy and that guy? And now, all of a sudden, it's a bigger issue. They've done a fantastic job over the years of mediating those issues. You haven't seen very many people in front of you complaining, nor do we have a tremendous amount of citations that are going to court. So, they've mediated this a lot, but it is a struggle. And it has become many times that code enforcement becomes the tool of the HOA because the HOAs know that we prohibit parking in driveways, so they don't have to enforce anything. They call our code enforcement and use them. And that's problematic as well. So, I think it's a great discussion. We have managed it for a number of years on a case-by-case basis, complaint-driven. We have areas where it makes sense. And again, there's a lot of areas where this is occurring and it's not a problem to the neighbors. It's, it happens on three days. They get it loaded, unloaded, they bring it back, they put it away. At the end of the summer, they go park it in a storage facility and it goes away and most of the neighbors don't care. But it does keep reoccurring periodically that we have this discussion. And so, having some clearer direction and some input from code as to what would help them, I think is a great conversation. I think it's going to continue to occur and we'll still have these conflicts. It is primarily, and I think Councilmember Kavner again has captured it, it is primarily an aesthetic reason why our code exists for them not to park it in the driveway, but to park it in the side yard or on the street. It is not a public safety concern about parking it on the property, other than the aesthetics of having it screened.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
And I think that when we get into the nitty-gritty of the discussion, then we can discuss, you know, is there a certain length of time that a vehicle, you know, still, it can be, there can be some boundaries set on it. Not that you can just live with a motorhome parked in your driveway, but, you know, those are things that we can talk about when we get into the details, I think.
So, Madam Mayor, if I may, one of the things, I guess, that I'm proposing is rather than just myself and somebody from the city attorney's office and code enforcement sit down and come up with another crack at this, that maybe we pull some minds together. We've got a fantastic, I think, not a month goes by that I don't speak about our Transportation Commission and the great work we're doing. I think there's some great thoughtful minds that are there. Maybe source one or two of them. Potentially, somebody from a dealership that sells boats or RVs. Again, we've got great businesses that do that in Meridian. I love task forces. I know other people on this body sometimes don't share the same enthusiasm for task forces, but anytime we can pull together a group of folks who want to work towards a solution, I think that's beneficial. I'm happy to lead that effort. I'm happy to defer those efforts to anyone else as well.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burke.
You took the words right out of my mouth, Mr. Kavner. I think it's a great idea, having a little committee get together and get some great minds brainstorming different ways in which we can improve this. Maybe reach out to some different HOA, you know, property management companies, maybe some HOA presidents as well. And that might be a great start.
Perhaps maybe involve our community liaison as well.
Yeah, perfect.
Which is great.
I'm in support.
And now that you can have storage units in a neighborhood, you can maybe solve it with that. Yes, Ms. Mylum.
Chief Bonjorno is a HOA president and I'd like to volunteer, tell him.
I'm in. I'll help.
There you go. Great minds.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Just my only commentary is I hope we wouldn't further muddy the razor or the water or whatever and make this more complicated by saying, okay, well, you can do it as long as it's between the hours of this and that and between winter solstice, whatever and whatnot.
That's a great idea. Write that down.
The Palmer Summer Solstice Ordinance. We'll write it.
Hey, and I don't want to give an opinion one way or the other because even on a day when I can make a motion to approve an art project and it be rejected, I don't want to push this one way or another by giving an opinion on it. I just hope we just don't make it more complicated, but I'm definitely in favor of cleaning it up.
Great. We'll get to work on it. Hopefully, bring it back September if that works okay for the mayor and council president and clerk. So, okay? Great. Thanks.
And I would recommend that we move Item 5D to the, were you here for that discussion, chief?
I can start it and ensure direct.
Here.
Start it and then continue it?
Yes.
I could also discuss it, too.
Madam Mayor, counsel, thank you for this opportunity. Councilman Borton was supposed to present it and I gave him all my notes, but I pulled up a few. This is just supposed to be a high-level discussion and wanted to get it in front of counsel to maybe reach out to your constituents and see what they think.
Let's see if there's interest from counsel to have further discussions.
Yeah. And so, the proposal is to, the potential discussion of having a hands-free cellphone ordinance in the city of Meridian. There are several cities within the state that have cellphone ordinances and There are several cities within the state that have cellphone ordinances, and, um, we'd be like, uh, fifth or sixth. The legislature, the legislature has attempted to, uh, get a state bill passed for several years, uh, without success. This past year, they were probably the closest as they possibly could have been, but it still didn't go forward. And really, the reason why I'm bringing this up is not because the police department wants it, because we're hearing it from the public. Not a day goes by that we don't have road rage, um, incidences, car crashes, distracted driving, um, impatience, frustration with the, um, amount of traffic on our redways, and unfortunately, infrastructure is not going to be able to catch up. And is there anything that we can do as a local municipality to ensure or assist in, in public safety? And I would challenge anybody here to just sit at an intersection and watch the traffic go by and count how many people have cellphones in their hands. I mean, just for an example that I wanted to bring to this council is, this afternoon, I sat at Eagle on Overland, and as, out of the fifteen cars that passed the left turn lane, thirteen of them were on their phones. We've had eighty-eight, um, texting while driving type crashes in Meridian that have been admitted to. People don't want to admit to that. They would rather admit to, um, something else than admit to an infraction of, of texting while driving. And we've had an increase of over three hundred crashes, um, over, um, seventeen to eighteen, I don't have the nineteen figures in front of me, and I shared a lot of those stats with, with, um, Councilman Borton. And my cellphone just went out, it's saying no messages, so I, I, I can't pull it from there. So, really, this was, this opportunity was just to have a very high-level, um, presentation to you, to see what your thoughts are, to see if you're willing to even, um, consider that, and possibly reach out to your constituents and see what they think. I've gotten a lot of public that says, we want this, we want this, we want this, but we know a lot of people are, are, are gonna fight it, but they're gonna fight it just because it's change, it's something they have to get used to. And unfortunately, with the growth that we're facing in this city and in this valley, we need to have one hundred percent concentration on what we're doing behind that wheel, um, and get the heck off our phones. There's going to be a lot of arguments that, well, you could be putting on makeup, you could be shaving, you could be eating, it does happen, but count how many times you see someone doing that compared to how many times you see somebody on their phones. Just pay attention to that, and see if your, if your thought process has changed, and see if there's any interest. So, that's, that's really all there is to it. Um, Councilman Borton just wanted to see if there was any appetite to this group to even consider it, and if there is, we'll bring it back at, at some later date. I, uh, forwarded him some, um, examples of ordinances that, um, city of Pocatello, Idaho Falls, Haley, Ketchum, I think those are the ones I forwarded to him, that, um, have ordinances in place. Our thought process is, is kind of like what we've had with a lot of other ordinances we've done on a, on a citywide level, is if enough cities get together and do what's right, perhaps the state legislature will do the same and do what's right.
And Chief, I think when Sergeant Gonzalez was working with the youth council on the seatbelt issue, as they were out with their clipboards and such, looking at who is wearing seatbelts and who wasn't, their biggest observation was, look at all the people on their phones, and they weren't all kids, so the adults were worse offenders than the, the teens were. Mr. Byrne?
Thank you, Chief. Um, I appreciate your presentation and your words and your direction. I've, I've, I have kiddos who have, who are driving, and kiddos who are starting to drive, and, and I was a really bad offender of this, and over the years, I've, I've gotten better, not perfect, I'd be a hypocrite to say that I never, you know, you know, checking an email or something while stopped, um, at a four-way stop, but even then, it just, it creates, um, congestion when you're holding up traffic, when traffic needs to be going, and so, anytime just, we, we can have a discussion about public safety and ways we can do better, then I, I'm for it, so I think we should, uh, I think we, I'm, I'm absolutely for having this discussion.
Um, Madam Mayor, Councilman Byrne, uh, glad you mentioned that, because just yesterday, we had a couple that were, um, at a stoplight, and the light turned green, and they paused because they were looking down. I don't know what they were looking down at, but they were looking down. The gentleman behind them laid on his horn longer than what normally would be to indicate he was upset. Happened right out here in front of City Hall, um, Meridian and me, and, uh, they pulled over in one lane, he passed them, got right up alongside them, pulled a gun out, pointed at them, um, with his four-year-old kid in the car. That's how frustrated he was, because they were paused for those couple of seconds. That's just one example of what we got going on here. Daily, but that happened yesterday, so he's on the jail roster for today. Many other charges besides that, I mean, alcohol, and he wasn't making smart decisions, but that is, your officers are facing road rage incidences weekly because of people on their phones and the impatience out there.
Ms. Mylum.
That one got me, because I'm sitting here thinking, being able to use my phone when I'm stopped, because I've tried really hard not to use it when I'm driving, keep, prevents road rage for me. In, when I'm frustrated with traffic and, and trying to get somewhere, I'm like, okay, I know I've got a couple minutes, the light is red, I've got it, I've got to text, get this text out or something, because I don't have a half hour till I get to my, my destination to wait. So, for me, it helps me prevent getting angry with the whole traffic situation. I never thought of it that way, you know, I also try to be very aware of the lights, and, and I see how it could cause a problem. I'm still, I am for having this conversation. Uh, uh, my concern really is, people coming from, they're, they're in Ampe, and they are going to Boise, and they're driving through Meridian, and they don't know that the laws change, um, when they're driving through Meridian, what happens then? They don't know, I mean, if people are just unaware, I really think this is a state issue, and we've had these conversations about other things, but...
And, and those are things that we can also address if we bring this back to... Mr. Cavanagh?
Madam Mayor, I think you hit the nail on the head. These are bigger things that we can talk about in much larger presentation. To me, a logical ordinance, it's easily enforced, supported by the public, be crazy not to do it.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh, were you done?
I am, yeah.
Mr. Palmer.
Even though it seems like the last couple of comments were, no more questions, I'm gonna ask one anyway. Do the, the ordinances exist in the other cities you mentioned, or the one you've, um, perceived potentially here? Make it so that you can't accept and/or initiate calls by looking at them, or is it one hundred percent hands-free? If you can't do it by speaking, you can't participate in a call?
Um, Madam Mayor, Councilman Palmer, the, the, the nice thing about the local ordinance is it can say whatever you want it to say, um, but what I have read in the drafts is that they give a emergency clauses in there, so if, if you have an emergency, you can be on it. It does talk about, um, using hands-free devices. The goal is to have the cellphone out of your hands, and so you're concentrating on, um, driving down the road. I will tell you that there are studies out there that if you are talking hands-free to someone on the phone, you're not one hundred percent concentrated when you're driving behind the wheel, but that's a really big ask to say that you're not going to have any sort of communications whatsoever. So, there is, um, exceptions to the law. It's really just trying to force people to do the right thing, and unfortunately, we've hoped that people would do the right thing for many, many years, and they don't, and that's just put your phones down and, and drive. It's addicting, you know, if I have my phone in my pocket and it rings, I feel like I have to answer it, and there's nothing that says, you have to answer it right there. Twenty years ago, we didn't, and there's something in our brains to say, we have to now, and...
That's because we're an instant information society.
Absolutely, and so, it's gonna take some change in behavior, um, and we found that simply doing the right thing is not the change in behavior, the catalyst for that, is, we're gonna have to put something with teeth in it.
Thank you. And for the record, let it be shown that, um, Councilman Bur- Borton has joined us.
And he owes me.
Time to adjourn.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, Chief, so, i- in the other cities in Idaho that have done it, are you allowed to look at your phone to accept a call, or to initiate one, or to end one?
Uh, Madam Mayor, Councilman Palmer, I don't want to speak out of turn and, and cite the law, because I don't, I don't recall what those exceptions are, so I, I would not want to, um, provide you with false information. I will tell you that I have provided those samples to Councilman Borton, he could probably provide those to you, and I can also get them to you at a later time, but I, I, I just don't feel comfortable answering that specifically right now.
Councilman Borton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I apologize. Chief, thanks for covering.
We're good.
Came from a, a feisty trial downtown. So, you, you shared with me, um, some great data and a couple of ordinances that answer these questions. You hit the nail on the head that there's great flexibility in how a city handles it. I think Pocatello and Ketchum were the two that I reviewed, um, more thoroughly, and they really do address, and this is a conversation maybe for the next step, but they address exceptions that would apply for, um, police and fire and their utilization of, of devices in the performance of their duties, as well as exceptions for individuals to report crimes or, um, immediate danger, immediate harm. I believe those two, other than those exceptions, would exclude utilizing the device to even, you know, answer the phone or decline a call, hands-free is hands-free. I thought when you brought it up, made the comment initially, it was really worth looking into, to kind of do the, the cost benefit of regulating this kind of conduct. I think you shared, or Officer Ford shared, I think there were eighty, over eighty instances of, of admitted, um, crashes here in our community.
And I shared that with the group here, too.
So, the, the cost is great. So, I think it's, it's well worth bringing forward and at least exploring further. I think the liberty that you have when you drive your vehicle is tempered somewhat by the fact that you do it on a public street, next to the public sidewalks, with our kids and families walking on it. I think there's some room for some safe middle ground to regulate the conduct, and if our community wants it, we should look into it further.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Um, I, I agree with Councilman Mylum that it, it is a state issue. Ignorance of the law does not remove one's responsibility to obey it, so if you're driving through Meridian and the law is different, you have to adhere to it, just as if you're driving from Oregon to some other state that allows marijuana through Idaho, you can't have it here. But, uh, it, it becomes very complicated, because then where do we stop? Um, if you're not allowed to, to look at your device to, to accept a call, well, what if it's on your dash? Well, if you're allowed to hit a button through the, the car's phone system to be able to accept it, just, you should be allowed to do that, just as you're allowed to, I imagine we wouldn't be taking away people's ability to adjust radio stations, um, but what's the difference? It's a, not a driving-related focused task, you're not looking at your speedometer, you're looking and messing with a radio, you're looking and messing with a phone that's on your dash, you're looking and messing with other buttons on your dash, built into your car for calls. It, it gets too complicated to have different cities, even if their ordinances are all identical, to, to have a reasonable expectation, um, that, that people, yes, driving through it, adhere to it, understand it, know what it is, know what the intricacies of that particular city's law is, it, it does need to be done at the state, so I'm not interested in, in pursuing it further as a city, to answer your question.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burke.
Just to respond to that, I, I'm never moved by an argument that it's a state issue, because in order to say it's a state issue is to accept the premise of that statement, which is, it's an issue in the first place, and now it's an argument over who's to solve the problem that we all admit exists. So, if we're gonna say it's a state issue, then we're admitting that there's a problem, we're just disagreeing on who's to fix it. So, if we've got the ability to fix it and address it in our community, all being in agreement that there's a problem to fix, then let's fix it. And there's no reason why our community can't do it, and, and if difficult decisions and lines need to be drawn on how far, um, in the, the specific structure of such an ordinance, why not do it?
And if I may just frame this conversation, we, we would like to get direction from council if the majority would like to see and move forward with, uh, proposed ordinance to come back for discussion. That discussion didn't need to happen today.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I guess that sounds almost backwards, I think we should have a discussion and then create an ordinance based on the discussion that we have. Do you know what I'm saying? So, they create an ordinance, and then we, I mean, I know we've done this before, it just always seems like we're just making extra work by creating ordinance, and then making a whole bunch of changes, and then changing the ordinance, and then making more changes, and it seems like if we had the conversation of, these are the things that we want to see in the ordinance, then create one. I don't know.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burke.
Maybe a suggestion to, to kind of close the loop on this was, it was gauging interest, if, if the majority of council is, that's pretty interesting, all the, the mechanics of how such an ordinance might work, and where lines are drawn, and language how other cities have used it, go bring that back, and, and we can do that. We've got, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, there's some great structure, at least from the few communities that we can crib from, that try to help us draft that, or create that line, um, and then focus the discussion from there.
Um, Madam Mayor, Councilman Borton, really what, what, what I wanted was for you to just go out and ask the citizens what they want, because this isn't something we're bringing forward on behalf of the police department, this is something that we are bringing forward on behalf of the citizens. And it really doesn't matter what we as a police department think, it probably really doesn't matter what you think, other than you have the authority to, to do the law. Do our citizens want it? And if they do, then we have the ability to bring it forward for them. If they don't want it, I, I, I don't want to push that on them, but, um, all the citizens that are approaching me says that we'd like to see something done. So, really, that's all it is, is just go back and do your research and see what the comfort level is, and if you give the, go ahead, we have the resources in place to provide you some, some draft ordinances, and then we can start that argument discussion from there.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Could I recommend either somebody from the PDE or Shandy put out a survey on Nextdoor, so we can, other than us talking to our constituents, get some more generalized feedback from those that maybe we don't get to see in person?
I think Shandy, since she is rear-ended by someone who is on their phone yesterday, would love to do that, who's not at work today, because she was rear-ended by someone that was on their phone, going forty miles an hour, so, and she was stopped at a stop sign. I, I guess perhaps we can, um, get some information out to, um, council members via email, uh, the drafts, if it triggers some questions, uh, we would love to collect those, and then we can help kind of identify the items that would like further discussion as, uh, you work to create, um, a template to bring back to council.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
When does the next citizen survey gonna be conducted, in the spring?
I think it's further out than that.
Like, you do them every couple of years, two, three years?
No, we do it every three years, and it's usually in the fall, so, I don't, I, I don't believe it's this fall, following fall. I can find out.
Madam Mayor, for what's worth, I'd be more supportive, I mean, if we're, if, if our intent is to really read our citizens, I support scientifically validated polling, and our citizen survey has given us good feedback on the thoughts and views on all things from our community. I would hold that data in much higher regard than a Nextdoor survey or, you know, an email communication, so...
Guess we can ask them to where they want to park their boats.
Sure could.
I think that you are the decision-makers. Well, we'll, we'll get some information out and, um, put this back on an agenda. I think that you are the decision makers. Well, we'll, we'll get some information out and put this back on an agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item number six is executive session. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I can help move it going to executive session pursuant to Idaho State Code 74206, 1C, D, and F.
Motion, a second to adjourn into executive session. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh. Councilmember Borton.
Aye.